The meeting will now come to order. We'll take our roll call. Mr. Landwehr, Ms. Sari, Mrs. Livingston Matherley.
Here.
Mr. Granland. Mrs. Olson. And Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson. He said, "I'm here." All please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The agenda was posted throughout the district according to school board policy, published as a legal ad in the Superior Telegram, posted on the district webpage, and sent to the W N X R radio station for announcement. A meeting notice was sent to the connection for publication. Let us begin with the approval of the agenda for the meeting tonight, August 9th, 2021. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the meeting tonight. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda tonight. We begin with the July 19th, 2021 regular board meeting minutes. And then, moving on to the treasures report, Mr. Landwehr.
The summary of the treasures report as of July 31, 2021. General fund. In the general account on July 31st, 2021, there was a balance of $3,175,745.15 in cash and investments. Receipts since the 1st of August and not included in the July 31 balance were $24,627.77 and the disbursements from tonight's August 9th board meeting total $165,050.90. In the flexible spending account on July 31, 2021, there was a balance of $29,516.67 in cash and investments. In the health reimbursement account on July 31, 2021, there was a balance of $10,166.30 in cash and investments. In the debt service fund on July 31, 2021, there was a balance of $673.24 in cash and investments. And in the capital projects fund on July 31, 2021, there was a balance of $37,095.86 in cash and investments. And a more detailed report on fund activity is included in your review, for your review, in the final statements, financial statements. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Landwehr. Payment of invoices is next. And then, moving on to resignations, please.
We have Gina Janowitz, part-time special education para educator at Northwestern Elementary School. And can I move on to employment?
Yes.
Kaylee Bergstrom as the 4K teacher at N E S as a result of Emily Peterson moving into the kindergarten position because of Courtney Janowitz leaving her position. Then we have Natalie Letto as an elementary counselor position, serving Iron River Elementary, Northwestern Middle School. And she will have some extra time to also spend at Northwestern Elementary as well. Dale Lundgren, head custodian at Northwestern High School. Noah Kets for a full-time 12-month position as an afternoon-evening custodian at N H S. Sarah Dahl as a .5 F T E math teacher at Northwestern High School. And Melanie Mishke, part-time food service at N M S for 5.75, replacing Chris Olson, who transferred to Iron River Elementary. Tamara Anderson, part-time food service, four hours at N E S, replacing Marcy Miller, who transferred to a full-time custodian position at N M S. Kimberly Anderson, part-time food service, three hours at N E S, supervision and computer monitor. Then, under retirement, we received a letter of retirement from Paul Stafford, Director of Finance and Business Manager, effective June 30th of 2022. Paul retires with 20 years of service. Recommendation, approve all.
All right.
No one has any of the extras? Or did you get, you got it at your table?
I don't think so.
Okay. So Peggy will make a copy of these and make sure you get a copy of them tonight before... Oh, you've got them all? Okay. Okay.
We, we don't have those new ones that you announced.
You don't have the new ones?
No. Yeah, yeah.
If you would like those, then ask Peggy and she'll make a copy for you.
All right. I would look for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion to approve, Kayle.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries.
Yep. You can hear us, correct, Brian?
Maybe you need to be on speaker.
Okay, he can hear us.
Should I be on speaker?
Yep.
There we go.
Okay.
Haven't done this before.
Okay.
All right. Moving on to our approval items for tonight. A, the opening for school for the 2021-22 school year to include administrative recommendations to make wearing of masks optional.
Okay. The school district of Maple will reopen all schools for in-person learning all day, five days a week. An online option is available, but students are encouraged to attend school on-site. It has been a practice, students and staff should stay home when sick and are encouraged to get tested. The school district of Maple has applied to work with a vendor to have rapid COVID-19 testing available on-site for students and staff. Social distancing is encouraged as much as possible. CDC recommends three feet. The school meal program will be made available to both on-site and online students. Face masks. Face masks will be worn by drivers and students in all school transportation vehicles. This is an order from the U.S. Department of Education. Two, wearing face masks during school and during extracurricular activities is optional. However, we encourage those who have not been vaccinated to consider wearing face masks. Quarantine requirements. One, if a student staff member is identified as a close contact at home, meaning outside the school, or a family member in the same household has tested positive for COVID-19, the student staff member will be quarantined. Bullet one, a staff member or student would be allowed to attend work-school with no symptoms if exposed in the home with disclosure of receiving a COVID-19 vaccination. For students, parent permission is required to access the Wisconsin Immunization Registry or proof of COVID-19 immunization card. Bullet two, the student staff member can take a COVID-19 test on days five, six, or seven, and return to school on day eight with a negative test result and no symptoms of illness. The student staff member can return to school without a COVID-19 test on day 11 after attending quarantine with no symptoms of illness. Two, if a student staff member is identified as a close contact at school, parents will be notified in writing of a school-close contact. Parent guardians can choose the course of action. Students will not be required to quarantine. Again, that is, has to do with no symptoms. Workplace protocol. Workplace protocols will continue during the next school year and may be amended time to time under the discretion of the district administrator and/or Board of Education as COVID-19 guidance and recommendations continue to evolve and/or circumstances dictate as appropriate to the risk involved. Teachers and bus drivers must continue to have seating charts for classrooms and school buses in order to identify close contacts. Sanitation and hygiene. District employees are expected to continue to use best practices for personal hygiene as recommended by the Center of Disease Control, including washing hands with soap and water as it is the best way to get rid of germs in most situations. Hand sanitizer may be used when hand washing with soap and water is not possible, but should not be substituted when hand washing is possible. Avoid touching your eyes, nose, mouth, and face coverings with unwashed hands. Continue to clean, disinfect frequently touched surfaces throughout the day. There may be particular positions where the essential functions of the position require the employees to have P P E, Personal Protective Equipment. In such circumstances, the district shall provide such P P E to those employees. Parents and employees who have questions on students returning to school following a COVID-19-related absence or questions on quarantine should contact Kristen Clemmer, the school district nurse, at 715-364-7104. Special note, this plan will continue for all schools in the school district of Maple unless COVID cases within the schools indicate a spike in positive cases or an order from the county level in which case the Board of Education will reconvene to determine the course of action. Dr. Crony has the authority to close school in the case of an emergency. If an emergency were to occur, and I couldn't, absolutely could not have you all together beforehand, I would follow through with trying to get a school board meeting together that night, just like we did back on December 10th, when I had no more staff and I had to, it was, call a special school board meeting. And at that point, I probably should have called school off for that day, but we were able to cobble it together for one more day. And that's, but the key here is, I'm not going to be making decisions on, yes, we need to go back to face masks, yes, we need to go to a hybrid model, unless I would have board approval. I'm talking about, I don't have enough staff. I can't run the district because I don't have enough staff, or there's been a spike and such, and I've been ordered to close it. I'm going to follow through with that order and I'm going to call a special board meeting right away. So that's what those lines mean. Questions, board, about the plan? Yes?
I just have a question if we need to pivot.
Yes.
At some point. How, what kind of notice, in an emergency situation, what kind of a notice is to call?
Same type of notice could potentially be, if I got ordered to close the school at noon, I would have to get it out to the TV stations. If I'm ordered to do something, I'm going to follow through as, as fast as practical.
But for us to meet?
Oh, we are allowed, if I can get all of you together, we can post it and be together within two hours. Emergency notice allows for two hours. And that's what we had to do that day, December 10th.
I can go next, Zizan. A few concerns I have. Number one, you say, when cases spike, we can look at masks. To me, that's kind of vague, because who determines what is, you know, what percentage we would, we would change the decision on? The other one is, I'm a little confused where you've got the number one and number two with the quarantine requirements. Number two says, parents will be notified in writing of a school-close contact, and parents, guardians can choose the course of action. I understood it that the reason why we were leaving it as a, up to them was because, at the time, we were all, everyone was masking. So when I read number one, it says...
I think the reason was, the 743 and only one case occurred out of close contacts from school contact. That was critical to the board, the data. The comment was, the data didn't warrant quarantining a child for 10 days if the 743 cases of kids having to be out and only one child out of those 743 ever contracted COVID.
Okay. My reason for authorizing it back when we did was because at the time, everyone was masking. So the belief was, well, if they were masking and keeping their distance and they were told they had a close contact, it was less worrisome because they, they had all been masking. So I just need a clarification on that.
And we did manage the whole summer and were absolutely fine following this protocol. So I guess you could say, have we tested this? Yes, we did through summer school, through the weight training program, through all of that. The admin team met and are 100% behind this, with the exception, we, Kristen Clemmer is not a member of the admin team. Kristen is our nurse. We invited her to that meeting, but she understood why the meeting and, you know, why we were making the recommendation. So in her position as a school nurse, her position is, follow CDC guidelines all the way to the letter. And, and we would expect no less for her to say that as the district nurse.
Don't the CDC guidelines, right now, refresh my memory, because I haven't read them as of today? They say to mask.
Absolutely, they say to mask.
So we're not following the CDC guidelines, then?
In that regard, no, we are not.
Okay.
That's why the board needs to make their decision.
I see, okay. Just clarifying.
Right. But admin team was 100% comfortable with this. The additions that we made to it of the quarantine requirements were bullet one, a staff member or student would be allowed to attend worker-school with no symptoms if exposed in the home with disclosure of receiving a COVID-19 vaccination. The thinking behind that is, there are no more COVID extra 10 days. There's no, that doesn't exist.
For staff.
For staff, correct. And so therefore, the goal is, how can we try to get staff back and not have to use their own sick leave days? And so that would be a way, it's, it's their choice. They don't have to, they can come back on day 11. That's their choice. But if they want to come back immediately, they'd be able to have, show proof of vaccination, they could be back immediately as a staff member or as a student.
I would just like to make sure I, I clarify. This is, under the quarantine requirements, under number one, we have the two bullet points. It's either/or, right? So...
Either/or. It's either...
It's either...
They got it home or they got it at school.
No, no, I guess I meant, not, not number one, number two, the two bullet points. So if a staff member or student, a staff member or student would be allowed to attend worker-school with no symptoms, if exposed at home with the disclosure of receiving a COVID-19 vaccination, they can come back to school right away. Or you have...
They can take a test.
Take a COVID test on day five, six, or seven and return on day eight.
That's correct.
Okay. And we had talked earlier on the phone, I don't know, was that a yea or a nay?
Yes, you could lift if you, if the board chooses to lift something or to make any adjustments, it's the board's plan.
Okay.
So the answer is yes.
Okay. And then, I guess I would just like to, I'm, I, I like the fact that there's either/or. You can, you know, personally, I'm not in favor of having to disclose whether or not you, you have or haven't had a vaccine.
And they don't have...
No, no, I know, that's what I mean. That's why I like the fact that you have one or the other. Or you don't have to have a test at all and you can come back after day 11.
That's correct.
So I, I think there are opportunities for families, again, putting the responsibility back on them to make the choice. You now have essentially three choices that you get to choose to make, so...
But some of our new staff members, and there's nine teachers right now that are brand-new at the elementary, they only get 10 days. That's all they get for six. They don't have anything built up. So trying to find an option was the goal of admin.
Yeah, and you're giving them the opportunity then to make that choice as well, so, yeah, okay.
Can I ask too, when you're talking about, are we talking about students? If there's a, a contact in the family coming back? Okay, so that, that would work for our 12 and over, what about our elementary kids?
Right. And they, they're, the only option for them would be the second bullet.
The second bullet or number two?
A second bullet. The second bullet of number one, for if it happened at home, they got COVID at home.
They got day five, six, or seven.
Correct.
Negative test, they can come back to school.
Right, right.
If they're under 12.
Was I understanding your question correctly, Jerry? And we do want to, after the discussion from the board, after the board's had all their chance to discuss, then you need to go to those people who want to speak from the audience.
Are there any more questions or comments from the board?
Well, I, I comment, I've been following the numbers and the Delta variant nationwide, and that's why the CDC has a recommendation, is a big problem nationwide. Locally, I've been looking at the numbers and it doesn't really warrant, you know, requiring masks, in my opinion.
There's a total of three, and that's today's information, three in Iron River. I forwarded that on to you from, is it Mrs. McCoy and, and Marie?
You mean in today?
Today. I forwarded, she is from the Iron River County Health Department.
Bayfield County.
Bayfield, oh, sorry, Bayfield County. Yes. And, but she separated it out. And Bayfield is where there are, I think, 11, but we have a total of three, and they can't tell us if, what ages they are, but it's three total in Iron River. And so then, Douglas County had moderate, is how they called it. They didn't give us any, you know, specifics today when we asked. Well, we asked a week ago. And of course, a, a week ago, Iron River had zero. So it's gone from zero to three for Iron River.
I guess my point is, the numbers haven't been spiking.
No, not, no.
My concern is that we're ready to pivot in case they do.
Correct.
But we don't know what our course of action for pivoting is, except for the fact of when cases spike. Does that mean two cases? Does that mean 22? Does that, that's very vague. So, kind of what I said from before is, I'm personally, do we have a month before school or three weeks?
We have...
I think it's between three weeks and a month, so...
September 1st.
I think a lot can change between now and then.
It's about the 31st for summer school open house. So the 31st of August. Oh, 30 and 31, right, I'm sorry. Two, two, so it's two weeks?
Three.
Three weeks from today. Okay.
And I think what we've learned from the past is, just because we don't have the numbers now, doesn't mean by the time we start school, those numbers won't be there.
Correct.
And when I say that, I'm alluding back to the fact that as things happen, we will be able to quickly get together and...
As long as people, well, even if they go on vacation or whatever, we, we still keep you involved and have a meeting. So if we had to have someone remote, we will do that.
And that has been our understanding all along, as this, as we've waded through this whole situation, is that if things are changing, we reconvene and look to see if we have to change what we're doing.
But again, we don't have anything set for, what, what do you mean, if things are changing? Again, is it two cases? Is it 22? Is it 102? We're basically saying, if cases come about, we can get together. My thought is, a lot can change in three weeks. You know, can we make the decision then?
Or it might not. We don't know. And if the county's not really, you know, strongly telling us, or even telling us what to do...
Or even tell, a week, we gave them a whole week.
Yeah.
And that was both Douglas and Bayfield. We haven't heard from either.
So. It's a little frustrating when you're asking the professionals for them to weigh in and cricket.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments? I have some people in the audience that wish to speak to this topic. I have Ruben Josephson. If you would step up to the mic, please.
Hi there. By the way, all this data is online. We can look it up. Right now, yes, Douglas County is moderate. We're at 39.7 people per 100,000. And to be substantial, it requires 50 people per 100,000. Just like last week, for one day, it did spike to, what was it? 48.67. I mean, how close do you need to be before we consider masking up in the schools? I'm not finished yet, but I'm, I'm just kind of curious.
The board cannot respond to you. This is listening. The board needs to listen.
Okay, perfect. Well then, listen to this. Okay, the CDC released an updated guidance within the last week. Given the new evidence on the Delta variant, CDC has updated the guidance for fully vaccinated people. The CDC recommends universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to, from K through 12 schools, regardless of vac, vaccination status. Children should return to full-time in-person learning in the fall with layered prevention strategies in place. Now, the Wisconsin Department of Health and Safety has just updated their guidance and released a statement within the past few days. Schools will keep their students and staff safe by following this updated guidance and implementing, implementing a testing, implementing testing. The updated school outbreak guidance emphasizes the importance of safe in-person instruction by providing layered prevention strategies, including promoting COVID-19 vaccination among staff and eligible, eligible students, universal masking wearing regardless of vaccination, that vaccination status, screening, testing, and others. So with that, the WHO, CDC, American Academy of Pediatrics, Wisconsin Department of Health and Safety, and Department of Public Instruction are all recommending universal masking. and Department of Public Instruction are all recommending universal masking until vaccines are available for all school ages and community spread is back to a low level, low level, not moderate. Masking is the best option available and is known effect is a known effective mitigation strategy. When given a choice to err on a side of caution or risk, the answer usually usually the answer is on the side of caution, which is the reason that the board is even considering making a, what is the reason for the that the board is even considering making a decision that errors on the side of risk, especially when children are involved? It's been roughly a year and a half since COVID arrived in our community. I can't understand why there are still debates taking place by our elected school board on whether or not to protect our children. Masks work. People may not like them, but they they that doesn't mean they don't work. Trying to appease to those who don't want to wear masks because they don't like it is irresponsible and dangerous. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Evan Longmiller?
I just have to say the back and forth up here has given me a headache. It makes absolutely no sense. You're going back and forth contradicting yourself and almost saying like, yes, we know COVID is a problem, but we don't want it to be a problem next year. So let's not wear masks, even though masks proved to be successful last year when kids went back to in-person, never had to go back to virtual last year because, wow, they work. And you're sitting here contradicting yourselves and saying that we don't need to wear a mask now, but we think that we're going to have to come up with this big plan because we think it's probably going to be a problem and I need to have this authority to shut down at any time. And it's like, if you think this is happening, protect these damn kids. They're little. They have no choice. And you want them to go to school because they do better in a stable, consistent environment. But a stupid mask is gonna like put my kids at risk because people can't wear this? I mean, come on, that's so selfish. And we know that you look around the community and it looks like, wow, everybody must be vaccinated because everybody's maskless, right? But the state vaccination rate's 50% about? So the honor system doesn't work. So you're putting our kids, I think you're setting them up for a disaster and you're setting them up for your teachers. You're worried about their sick time. Well, if they don't have masks, they're probably going to get sick. Keep a mask on them and you're going to have teachers that are able to stay in school and be healthy this year. It's just pure idiocracy. The mask will help kids stay in school this year. It'll help your staff stay healthy. I mean, it's just a no-brainer. And it's shameful that we even have to have this conversation and put our kids at risk. And it's like shame on shame on anybody that's going to vote against this mask requirement. It's disgusting.
Alice Miller?
Hi. My name is Alice, and I have two children. They're under the age of 12. They're going to school and unable to be vaccinated. This masking, your job is to protect our children. They go to school expecting to be safe. You started locking doors because of active shooters because you want to keep our children safe. We know there's a pandemic, but you're worried about a mask? Your job and your duty is to keep our children safe. They go there as innocent little humans expecting you to take care of them. And you want to put them in a room with people that don't believe in the vaccine, people that don't believe in masks, and have them get sick. And I'm going to tell you right now, the Academy, American Academy of Pediatrics and infectious disease doctors and all pediatricians are saying COVID with the Delta variant, it is a pandemic among the unvaccinated. Yep, there it's better right now because many of us got vaccinated. I'm guessing a lot of people here got vaccinated, and that's why they feel so comfortable without their mask and good for you. But these little kids don't have a choice. It is not fair to make these innocent children be put at risk like this. I have been a nurse for 43 years, longer than most of these people have been alive. I have watched people, I worked in the ER for 20 years. I have watched people come in struggling to breathe with fear in their eyes and regretting the choices they've made as they realize they're going to die. This is not fair. Our children, right now, this thing called MIS, it's multi-system inflammatory syndrome, is on the rise in all the unvaccinated states, and it's hitting children. They are in the hospitals. And multi-inflammatory syndrome is a syndrome, for those who don't understand it, that's going to affect your children's brains, their lungs, their heart, it inflames their organs. And it is long-term. Children that don't even have symptoms of COVID come down with this syndrome, and then they go, oh, by the way, they do have COVID. And now they have got some major problems and they are in intensive care. Some of them are dying, and they're going to have long-term effects for the rest of their lives. And it's because people are like, my rights. I don't care about your rights. Why don't you complain about your rights of not walking into school whenever you want? You're locking the door. There are a lot of things we do to protect our children. We put seatbelts on them. We put helmets on them. We don't allow them to play in the streets. We put life jackets on them. But yet you're saying a year and a half into a pandemic, when a Delta variant, which is highly transmissible, much more virulent, let the little children who innocently go to school and believe they're going to be safe, let them go ahead and let them be the test. That's not fair. You know what? You guys can all get vaccinated. You can take care of yourselves. They cannot. They're under 12. Protect them. And it is your moral obligation as a school board to protect our children. And if you don't do that, and any of these kids, any of these young parents here that don't understand, and I do because I've been a nurse longer than you people have been alive. If you want to see your kids in the ICU with a tube down their throat and struggling to live, and you can't even be with them because of COVID, you think that's a joke? You think that's worth not wearing a mask this year? Are you kidding me? You know, most people, the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, infectious disease, they're begging you to put masks on people. I, you know, I could say, okay, if you're over 12 in the middle school or whatever whatever grade that is nowadays. They've changed it since I was a little kid. But if, you know, you can get a vaccine and you choose to go to school without a mask, go ahead. But these kids don't have a choice. And I've got one more thing to say.
Your time is up.
I got one more thing.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Oh, really?
Yes.
My time is up. Are you on what?
You're allowed three minutes. Judith Chaney?
I'm Judith Chaney. I have seven kids, five of whom are between middle school and elementary school and two that are younger. I just had a couple of questions about, I don't know if you guys can answer or not.
They can't answer. I can speak with you tomorrow, but you're allowed to talk.
Okay. I guess we're talking about masks. My personal preference, I was very happy to see that masks were going to become optional and that if you preferred your child to wear it, they could wear it, and if you preferred them not to or they didn't have to. We chose last year to homeschool because of all the COVID stuff. It's harder. It was harder to juggle all of the the COVID rules than it was to just homeschool five kids. It's not easy to homeschool five kids. I'm going to tell you that, because it's not. So I'm, you know, I was like ready to go back to school. I'll, you know, bought backpacks and everything. And now I'm like, well, if we're going to not, if we still have all these rules that make it harder to send our kids to school. I'm not the only person in the district who thinks this way and who, you know, that it has issues for. I don't know. I know that talking to people from last year who sent their kids, the mental health of our students suffered greatly. That's a factor, too. Yeah, I don't know. And I guess I'll talk to you, Sarah, about my other questions.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right.
The input, we do have 300 signatures sent to the board. You, did you receive this from Misty Hildreth? Via email, did you get the 300 signature?
Unless it came later today.
It all came today. I have two copies of it. Did you want to take a look at the? I just need one of them back at the end of the meeting, but the other can, to enter into the public record.
Okay.
All of those signatures are in favor of masking as optional, those 300 signatures.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask.
I'm sorry.
All right.
And then you have the one from Katie Johnson as well, right?
That's on the table.
Right.
Mr. Landwehr?
May I entertain a motion?
Do we have more people?
No, that was it. That was it from the public for now. So we're ready to.
I guess with that being the case, I entertain a motion to approve the school district in April reopening and continuing. Continuity?
Continuity?
Continuity of education plan for the 21-22 school year as written.
All right, and that includes wearing a mask is optional. Okay. Do we have a second?
A second then.
We have a motion and a second to approve our reopening and continuity of education plan for the 2021-22 school year. Any further questions or comments?
Just a note that a number of people on the petition or whatever are not.
Right, it's a petition.
They're not residents of this area.
Okay.
Just so you know.
We don't have to do a roll call unless we want to.
You could do whatever you wish to do.
Yeah.
It does, it won't matter because I will be in the minority, but no, I'm not in agreement.
Just call.
Nor am I.
Call for a vote, is what Gail just said.
All right. You want to call for a vote?
Okay.
Okay, Gail, we'll do that. All right. Mrs. Olson? Okay, the motion is that we would approve the reopening and continuity of education plan for the 2020-20-21-22 school year as was read aloud to everyone.
Can I give my long answer? This has been, I flip-flopped on this for so long, the last three weeks especially. And I guess the end of the day, it basically, I don't have a background in science or healthcare or infectious diseases, so I guess I count on the agencies that give that, provide that information, the Department of Health and Services, the Center for Disease Control, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the World Health Organization, our local and state health agencies. And I guess if their recommendation, after decades of following the science, is to mask up, especially for our little kids who just don't have the option. That's kind of been how I've been feeling and as much as I've been reading. And I know, and I think the all the people that have sent information with links, it is very helpful and it helps with the decision-making. But I think too that we're all a little bit guilty, myself, I'm included in that, of confirmation bias, where we tend to often follow sites and news sources that align with our beliefs, which can be dangerous sometimes because you're only getting one side of the story. And this has been a very hard decision for me for which way, because I can definitely see both sides. I thought we were done with this. And if you would have asked me three weeks ago, I said masks. Of course, we're not going to wear masks. But things are changing rapidly with this, just as it did from the start. And even though we don't see those numbers quite yet, we know that it's most likely coming. And we need to protect the kids who don't have a choice to be vaccinated until that happens, which is, they say, about three months down the road. So I am, I'm a no.
Yes.
Mrs. Livingston, Mary Lee?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sari?
Yes.
Mr. Landwehr? And I vote yes. Motion carries. Moving on, we have requests for inter-district transfer. You have information in your packet as to who and why? All right. I'm just trying to find my information, sorry. So do you want to say anything or do you have questions for either of these families? Oh, here we go. I'm trying, I know they're in here. I just have to.
Should I give you mine?
Find them in this whole pile. Okay. Hang on one second.
Would you like the name Brianna of Verdoljak?
I'm glad you have to say that.
For her child to attend Northwestern Elementary School, for the reasons contained in her correspondence. She's unable to attend as she's still in Alaska. However, she's on the phone right now. Okay, got her?
Yes.
Any questions about this one?
Just the standard question. It's going to cover both of them, which is you have, they've already been discussed about transportation and all things associated with what that means for the families, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so that there's no surprises that we're not providing transportation.
And then based on, I don't, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, based on what you had provided as well, that we're still able to keep class sizes low like we had originally talked here a few months ago.
Because we now have four classes for grade.
Okay, thank you.
So are you kind of handling both of them at the same time? Okay.
All right. Are there any questions about, any further questions about this first request?
I'd like to ask. I know it's for logistics.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to ask them if it is for logistics.
Yeah.
They're ready to answer, right?
Oh, she's on the phone, yes.
Is the question is, is it for logistics?
Yeah, so it's, I would call that logistics.
I'd call that logistics.
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
No, they're making one at a time. Is that correct or are you doing both at the same time?
We'll do one at a time.
One at a time.
I'll make the motion.
To approve the request?
To approve.
Okay, a second? We have a motion and a second to approve this transfer or inter-district transfer for Hunter Verdolak.
Verdoljak.
Verdoljak.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
I was hoping someone would know how to say that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a request from Serena, no, another name, Popo?
I think so.
For her children.
I got the Verdoljak. That's somebody else's job to get this one.
Right.
Yes, and again, this appears to be logistics as well, as far as where people work and.
And that the kids already went there.
Right, and they've already, and the children.
What grades are the children in?
Fourth grade.
Yeah.
Fourth grade, I believe, Gail.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And they have been at NES already, so.
They have already been.
That would save them that, having to switch.
Motion approved.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the second transfer, inter-district transfer for while Serena Popo and her children, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have the seclusion and restraint report that we get annually.
Just need approval for this as per requirements from DPI. That you receive this and that you formally make a motion to approve.
Gail makes a motion to approve.
Cherry, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the report that we've been given regarding seclusion and restraint from 2020-21 school year. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. The 2021-22 handbooks for students, teachers, special education, transportation, and the co-extracurriculars.
Et cetera.
Et cetera, we had homework to do. And I'm assuming that if you had questions or comments, you probably reached out to the principals in regards to that.
Thank you.
I probably should have, but I, I just have a comment. I was happy to see that your leave forms are online now for the-
Yes, all of it.
That is fantastic. What about the, the subcalling, is that still the morning of?
That is still done the morning of or ahead of time, and Jenny Keller has that role.
Okay, and do we, is there any vision as far as putting that on an online service?
No, not with the amount of money that it costs for that service. It, years ago, it was 8,000 a year for doing it that way. So I, right now, it hasn't been a priority to do that.
Anyone else? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the handbooks?
That is amended.
All right, we have Mr. Grandland made the motion, Ms. Sari, would you like to second it?
Yes, then.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve the changes and the end product of the 2021-22 handbooks for students, teachers, special education, transportation, co- and extracurricular, et cetera. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the same sign. That motion carries. We have copies of the 2021-22 district emergency management plan in our packets.
Right, we appreciate that this did not take huge revisions as in the past. It was name changes, dates updating, because this has seen a great deal of work with the active shooter plan and all getting in and all of that being done.
Yes. Are there any questions, comments? If not, I would entertain a motion once again.
I'll make a motion to approve the district emergency management plan. 2021-22.
You have a second? We have a motion and a second to approve the 2021-22 district emergency management plan. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, the same sign. That motion carries. We have the second reading of some new policies, board member information requests, board member behavior and code of conduct, student mental health services, and control of bloodborne pathogens. Any questions, comments? After reading through it a second time? If not, today we've, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to approve our new policies. Once again, there are board member information requests, board member behavior and code of conduct, student mental health services, and control, control of bloodborne pathogens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. That motion carries. Moving on to communications received, Dr. Cronie.
A working draft copy of the August 26th and 27th in service. Also, the 30th and 31st welcoming all staff as well as, of course, students and parents to the summer school open house. 21 staff development, 2021 staff development, summer school open house plans are part of your communication correspondence from Roger Colby, Town of Maple Road Foreman regarding the roads. An ad hoc committee has been formed for the August 10th, that's tomorrow morning meeting, 9:00 a.m. That's in the district office conference room. Correspondence with Wisconsin DPI regarding the career in technical education, incentive grant award of $8,774.08. Cody alerted us today about the transition grant, another $37,000 for special ed transition student plan. They're gonna buy a vehicle with that so that that type of conversation between students and employers for that transition will be much easier to occur. Right now, they can't get any vehicles though, so that's gonna be on hold for a while. An article from the July 21st, 2021 Superior Telegram that schools will be serving free lunch for 21-22 and the minutes from the July 19th Building and Grounds Transportation Meeting. That is big, big news about free lunch for those not only who qualify, but for all students. I think that's wonderful, wonderful news. And utilizing this venue to be able to get that PR. Can I move on to the budget meeting?
Yes, you may.
The budget meeting format will remain the same as in previous years. Budget hearing will begin at 7:00 p.m. in the boardroom, Room 2270, with the annual meeting to follow on Monday, September 27, 2021. Information is being compiled at this time, including the 21-22 budget booklet, which outlines the education plan for the district as well as projected expenditures and revenue budgets. An informational booklet will be available at the annual meeting with the completed audited 2021 figures. Enclosed with the board packets are the legal posting and the ground rules.
Thank you. We have our maintenance update, and we were in, at NES and the middle school prior to this meeting, so we have seen some of the updates with new windows and some carpeting and very, very shiny floors. The buildings are looking good, and we will be visiting this school for tour and Iron River Elementary as well tomorrow, actually.
Tomorrow, so 3:00, we meet at the district office and we'll start the tour from there. And then we go to Iron River after the high school tour, at 3:00.
Okay.
Oh, we are. Oh, my bad, okay.
I don't, I don't know, let's look what, I thought it said here first too, because I thought I'll end up by home. But I can do it the opposite way, it doesn't matter. It says meet at NHS, then to IRES.
That's what I have. Was it not posted that way, Peg? Oh.
So what's the board's wish?
Well, I'm, I remember specifically asking to do Iron River first because I've got a kid's orthodontist appointment at 2:50. So you guys were gonna do Iron River, and if you're gonna do it opposite, I'll just make appointments on my own to do it the other way, which is fine. So, if you want to do it the way, do it to high school and then go out-
I don't want to miss any board member. So, so we will flip flop?
Well, I'm gonna miss Iron River either way, is what I'm saying. That, that's what I'm saying, so if you end up wanting to do the high school and then I'll just get in contact with Mr. Carlson and Mr. Larrabee, because I-
Because you'd be missing it anyway.
I'm gonna miss the Iron River one anyways.
What do you think?
Anybody else? It doesn't matter to me.
It'd be nice for you and I to- If not, you know.
All right. Well, if it doesn't really matter, we'll start here as it says.
Start here at 3:30 then.
Is it gonna be 3:00 or 3:30? It says 3:00.
Well, I know, and I had it down, but-
I'm just reading it right off of here, you know, I get confused otherwise.
So, I think Peg put it in the enhancement as 3:00, so that's what we're gonna do.
Okay.
All right.
3:00, district office tomorrow.
Correct.
For our tour.
Got it.
All right. Then we have the WASB correspondent and legislative update, Mrs. Olson.
Just a couple things that they posted just in the last couple days. Wisconsin State Health Department and DPI released new guidelines for schools. The recommendation emphasizes universal masking amid concerns that the Delta variant is driving a surge in cases, and many children remain unvaccinated or unable to be. DPI has updated its COVID mitigation measures for schools, and DHS updated guidelines for preventions, investigations, and control of COVID outbreaks. Both agencies are strongly recommending school districts use those recommendations. The U.S. Department of Education released the return to school roadmap resources, and those you can find on the WBS site as well. And on August 11th, the Senate Education Committee will hold a joint public hearing on bills to address critical race theory in public schools as well as bills that aim to address curriculum transparency. That's about it.
I did have down, I don't know if the board received this yet, Wednesday, September 29th, WASB workshop, effective community engagement at board meetings, and the regional meeting follows it. So, it would be 4:30 to 6:00 is the workshop, and then the regional meeting for Region 1, which is our group, 6:30 to 9:00 at the Spooner Civic Center was what they had down for our region.
September 29th?
September 29th, it's a Wednesday. We've had, generally speaking, we've had 100% attendance at that regional meeting.
No pressure.
Well, I'm just, that's what I was told when I first came here.
Is it for me to attend?
For everybody.
For all of us, yeah.
No, 100% means you don't have to go by yourself. Oh, is that why? Oh, they combined the two?
It's a bigger group, yeah.
Dude, okay, got it. Thank you, Gail.
All right.
I am going to attend the workshop, so I would take the Camry ahead for those who want to do the workshop. And then I need somebody else to do the driving of the school van if you don't want to do the workshop and you just want to go to the regional meeting and dinner.
And that was at 6:00?
That was at 6:00 for registration, but 6:30 is when the food starts. So as long as you're there by 6:25, you'll be fed.
You get to eat.
Yeah. But it would be nice for us to have a hand vote at the September meeting so that we could get everybody registered if you could please make a decision by the September board meeting.
All right.
Okay.
Will do. CISA 12, Ms. Sari, do you have a report tonight?
Okay.
All right, thank you. It says no donations this month?
Nope.
All right. Student, staff, and community recognition, probably nothing right now.
No, but we do have a grant that Paul and I worked on, and we have 300 laptop, not laptops, Chromebooks. Chromebooks. Already onsite. So that was really good news.
That is great news.
Was it 400 and how many, 50, what was it?
It was 300, and it's the emergency-
The dollar amount, was the?
Well, for those, 50 something.
50,000, yeah. Yeah, we were pretty excited.
I noticed in the reading that we had that we are now going to have a debate club.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm just wondering, Mr. Carlson's here.
Debate.
Debate club.
Mm-hmm.
So, who's the advisor for that? Do we have an advisor already?
Mr. Carlson?
The Debate Club is one of our newest student-initiated clubs, which would take place during our academic advisory period on a rotational basis. Adam Helbach is the advisor for that, and we will see how that runs for a couple of years and see what the interest is, and if after a few years we get continued interest, we may look at that as being an additional extracurricular that would then enter into, you know, local, regional type competitions. But for now, it's just a, a club to see what type of interest there is in the, with the students.
Thank you.
It is now time for comments from the audience. The comments from the public agenda item is not the forum for school district of Maple personnel concerns. The public needs to refrain from the use of names or specific positions when used in a negative manner. If you have concerns that involve personnel or staff members, please contact the building principal or the superintendent. Do we have any comments tonight from the audience?
I'd like to say, first off, I'm sorry for us reacting the way we did and walking out. However, we're clearly very passionate about this, and I was just really optimistic and hopeful that we were going to send our kids back to school with a lower level of risk. But clearly, we've got a community of COVID armchair experts. I hope you guys are more knowledgeable than the experts around the world that are providing a different recommendation than you all are. So, fingers crossed, we'll get the kids back to school and they'll be safe. But it'll be interesting to see what happens. Again, sorry for reacting that way, but I'm not sorry for feeling the way that we feel.
Are there any other, or any further comments from our audience tonight? All right, seeing none. Consideration for an executive session is necessary for those items exempted under, under open sessions according to the Wisconsin State statutes, 19.85, parentheses 1, C, E, and F. Included under these items are revisions to the Director of Finance contract and discussion of a long-range administrative succession plan. I will need a motion, a second, and a roll call.
Motion to approve, going to closed session?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, moving to executive session. Mr. Landwehr? Ms. Sari? Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Livingston Matherley?
Yes.
Mr. Grandland?
Yes.
And Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
All right, and then I would ask for a motion to adjourn the open session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the open session.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the open session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.